Used to live in the same.
Yeah, it just took a minute to launch.
I found it earlier. And then you have to click it again.
Normally my Zoom would open up, but it wasn't.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, October the 10th, 2023. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Normal items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. I'd like to note tonight that Mr. Alonso is not able to join us this evening.
It's Chris.
This is what I know that Mr. Alonso is not able to join us this evening. We're to start tonight with public comments from the board. Do we have any public comments this evening from the board?
I just have one. I went on the town website to check the calendar this afternoon. I had forgotten that the new website was going live today, so I was pleasantly surprised to see that new look. I thought it looks really current, fresh, and I clicked around a bit. And yeah, just thanks to everyone who was involved in launching that.
Great.
I was also going to plug the town's new website. I think it's a nice, modern upgrade. One thing I really like about it is the new Agenda Center page. So if you go under Boards and Commissions and go to Agendas and Minutes, all of the agendas and minutes are there on one page, so it's super easy to go through all of them. So I also will just thank our IT staff and our town manager for the work that they put in to get it live.
The website's great. They covered it. I just want to announce that tomorrow morning, there's a pancake breakfast at Eagle House, Lunenburg Adult Activities Center. That's at 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM.
All right. And you know, tonight, I just want to speak to all of us in attendance and those at home that, you know, when we have tragic events occur in the world, that they many times do affect many people here, here in town and their loved ones. So I just encourage the community to offer their prayers to the people of Israel and Palestine as they work as due to the current conflict, all the many people who and lives that will likely be lost in the coming days and weeks or months ahead, and that this conflict around the world, which is the seat of many of our faiths, is able to resolve itself as soon as possible and as peaceably as possible. So I ask all of us to offer our prayers in that way. Do we have any public comments this evening from the public?
Carl Luck, 50 Sunset Lane. Unfortunately, Mr. Alonso is not here, but I wanted to start off by thanking him again for sharing his thoughts after our public comment last week. To be clear, the open meeting law complaint that we filed only named two of the members of the investigation team that we felt confident had violated open meeting law, that being the town manager and the select board chair or team lead, Michael Ray Jeffries. As you know, the state, after a thorough investigation, determined that there was indeed an open meeting law violation. The complaint intentionally did not include Tom, as we did not believe he had violated open meeting law, and his comment that he did not attend a single meeting of the team is consistent with that belief, as shocking as the comment was. Regarding Tom's other comments, again, Phyllis and I took great care to make sure that everything in our comment was accurate, and to date, there has been no specific inaccuracies identified. I confess at the time, I did not know what Tom's comment about us implying nefarious intent really meant, so couldn't really address it. He kind of got me with that word. Now that I understand nefarious can mean wicked or evil, I think this is too strong a word for what we have come to believe. It is our feeling that two of the members of this team have demonstrated questionable behavior throughout this investigation. Perhaps it approaches nefarious, which also can be called, I understand, malfeasance when it comes to public officials, but we don't believe that we are there yet. Tom also correctly indicated that the MFS report, final report, includes what he believes to be the root cause of the issue. We agree it does identify the main issue, the principal assessor's work and department staffing. However, the draft investigation team's report, which has been presented a couple times by the select board chair, omits these factors and repeatedly asserts that the principal assessor did no wrong and followed all DOR process requirements. This is blatantly untrue. Further, the draft report is also completely silent on any responsibility the town manager had regarding the management of the prior contract outside assessors or supervision of the principal assessor and his department. Perhaps we are inching towards nefarious. There is still a lot of work to do to finish this investigation, and the residents need more from the investigation team, and we need it now. One immediate and positive action the team could take would be to publish all the team's and the residences' questions, as was promised over nine months ago. The residents also deserve to be informed what the team's plan is to complete this work, hopefully including plenty of time for public input, review, and input. Most important, the investigation needs to open up the process, remove barriers to access of information, move quicker, and regain the confidence of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luck. Do we have any other public comments this evening from the public?
Phyllis Luck, 50 Sunset Lane. I was a member of the select board for six years, joined in 2014 as green as green could be, having no prior experience on any of Lunenburg's town boards. I understand the difficult position the two new select board members are in. You've just been thrown into the fire. It took me a couple of years to find my voice on the board. Unfortunately, you two don't have that luxury. The town is still in the throes of the tax debacle which erupted last January. The investigation team created by the select board has run off the rails. From its inception, citizens have questioned its very makeup and procedures. Why would the supervisor of the principal assessor be on the investigation team? Isn't that an obvious potential conflict of interest? Why would the first action of the team be to silence the principal assessor and tie the hands of the board of assessors so that no information was available to residents? Doesn't that feel a bit like a cover-up in the making? Why hasn't the resident's very first question, which is, how was the 135% tax increase for lake properties calculated, never been answered? It's a straightforward question, and the ability to get it answered, quite frankly, makes one suspect the motives behind such an action. Since its inception, the investigation team has done quite a bit of covering up and provided very few findings of their investigation. They did bring in MFS, but then tainted those efforts by causing a significant difference between the MFS draft version, draft report, and the final version released several weeks later. The final version doubled the tax increase percentages, which, curiously, tied out to the amount the town manager had initially set aside for this purpose. As members of the investigation team, the select board chair and town manager have broken the law on multiple occasions, as determined by the State Office of Open Government, by defying open meeting law. Further, they have obstructed the public from gaining information they are obliged to provide. Hopefully, these two will see the writing on the wall and resign from this failed investigation team. Should they not, we would request that the select board immediately move to dissolve this team and restructure it by appointing two new members to join Selectman Alonso, who has demonstrated diligence in trying to get to the truth. It's further hoped that one select board member and one citizen will be chosen to complete this new team, which would then comply with open meeting law and begin to meet in the open. What a different place that Tom would be in today had they just done the right thing from the start. A long 10 months ago. Select board members are elected by the residents to act in the best interest of the town and its citizens. The failed investigation team created by the then-select board is your team, your responsibility. Please take action now to right this ship. Thank you.
Thank you. Although there were many inaccuracies in the public comments this evening, I have a general stance of not directly responding to public comments, so I will not this evening.
Good. Good evening, Anna Lockwood, 91 Main Street. Public comment, I think I'll be interjecting a couple items. You know, the, as a resident that was not affected by the tax increase, but who cares tremendously about our town, and knowing some town employees, knowing some other people that are elected officials, you know, I don't think there was ever anything nefarious about the investigation team. I think my understanding was you guys were doing extra work to try to figure out how to get things resolved. I think that's the feeling that a lot of people has, is that there was extra hours put by everyone involved. I think all the reports have been made public. You guys have answered the same questions a million times. You know, the best way for the same thing not to happen again, we have three new assessors, board of assessor members, they were there two weeks ago. I watched their meetings. I appreciate everyone who has signed up to serve on that board. And, you know, and we have some really good things happening in town, and, you know, Marshall Park is one of them that we're all working on it. So, you know, I think, I think we have learned our lessons as a community. I think the community itself, you know, we kind of, nobody spoke against pushing, you know, doing the rebates or the tax abatements and all. I think now it's time for us to move on. Look at what we can build on the community, make sure it doesn't happen what happened before, but, you know, the town, the town employees, we have, we have lost many town employees, they take a lot of criticism, and I worry about losing more. We can't. So I ask my fellow residents to, you know, let's look forward, try to, you know, move on, look at what's great about our community, and be supportive of our town employees and fellow commissioners and board members. So that's all. That's my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments this evening? Any on Zoom? All right. Let's go to announcements. Any announcements this evening?
I can wait until after the parks commissioners appointment. I know Chris is, has a tight time schedule.
Sure. All right. So let's jump to that. So we have a, it's noted as a joint meeting. Are you planning on having a joint meeting?
Yeah, we do have, of course.
All right. So we're having a joint meeting with the parks commissioners to interview and appoint the Parks Commission vacancy until the May 2024 annual town election of Anita Shiper's 63 Chestnut Street.
All right, I gotta call my meeting short. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel on Facebook Live, on Public Access, and will be uploaded on the Public Access YouTube channel. Sorry. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items, in fact, may be discussed, and other items not listed may be brought for discussion to the extent permitted by open meeting law. With that, I'll call my meeting to order. Roll call because Chris Sullivan is remote. Chris Sullivan?
Here. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yep. Karen Menard?
Here.
And Anna Lockwood, I'm also here. So thank you.
Okay. So to the town manager, I'll turn to you to kind of get us started on this process here tonight, if you want to introduce the candidate to us.
Usually the candidate introduces herself or her himself, but Anita has stepped forward. She's been a resident of town for I don't know how many years.
It was 2009.
Lives on Chestnut Street, and we'd hope to get her on a different committee, but hopefully eventually she'll come.
No, we're gonna keep her for a while. We're gonna keep her. My husband can suffer for a little bit longer with another vacancy in his.
I know Anita professionally. She used to be a town administrator, so, and comes very well recommended, and so I'm very happy that she's stepped forward for this position.
All right. So usually the select board to get started, but Anna, I want to turn to you for any questions that you have. Well, I'm sorry, Anita, if you wouldn't mind stepping forward and just explaining your interest in being on the Parks Commission? And then we're going to turn back to the Parks Commissioners for them to ask any questions that they may have. It's also good in this to speak if you've already met with them and, you know, and know how that went.
Okay. As was mentioned, I've been in town since 2009, and I have just recently retired from a 25-year career as a public administrator, town administrator, town manager in various different communities, mostly central Massachusetts, and took a few years off saying I was not going to get involved in any town committee, but I'm ready. So when Anna reached out to me and asked if I would be interested in being part of the Parks Commission, I said yes. Part of the reason is that being a Chestnut Street resident, you know, I have a unique perspective that I can offer the Parks Commission, and also having been a town manager, a public administrator, I certainly understand the degree of collaboration that needs to take place between different boards and committees and the public in terms of putting, you know, forward any facility improvements, capital improvements, that type of thing. So as well as working with others that are users of the park facilities. So I'm looking forward to it, and I hope that, you know, my appointment at this point gets approved, and I'm looking forward to getting started.
All right. And so Anna, any questions that you have for the, for Anita?
No, I just want to thank her for, for joining us, and I think she will be, she doesn't know how many documents I'll be forwarding to her as soon as this is official. But yeah, she's joining me in a meeting on Friday. She's gonna meet Chris. We are very excited, and I know she's gonna bring so much experience. We are a little bit, you know, with the support of Heather and Chris, we've been working to figure out the process for this, but I know now we're gonna have a resource within us, and I think we'll be able to get what we are doing, doing what we are doing even better and faster. So I'm very excited. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Kim?
I actually don't have anything. I'm just excited to be bringing on a new member. I think every time we, we gain a new member, they bring a new level of experience, and this is one that we've never had on the Parks Commission that I can remember, and I've been here for seven years now. So I'm excited to bring somebody on with this level of knowledge of the, of how municipalities work, so I think this will be great.
Okay. And Chris?
No, thank you for stepping forward. We appreciate, appreciate it. You know, I'm looking forward to, looking forward to working with you. Excited for the knowledge that you're bringing to the table and the perspective that you have, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. To the board.
I have no questions. I mean, the enthusiasm, these two are nearly jumping out of their skin here, but I think your experience is fantastic, and I'm, thank you so much for coming out of retirement and applying that experience to a, to a committee in town.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hi, Anita. I also don't have any questions, but, you know, as a retired town manager, you obviously know how town government works, so you have the professional experience and the personal connection, since you live on Chestnut Street, so it sounds like you're a perfect candidate. So thank you for wanting to volunteer.
Well, you're clearly eminently qualified and heavily endorsed, so I have no questions. I will simply thank you.
I want to thank you as well, but I do have a question. So you live across in the area of Marshall Park, and have you had the opportunity to see the plans for what is being proposed?
I have.
Are you in support of those plans?
I am.
Okay. And what part of it really speaks to you? What part of the plans do, I guess, do you like the most?
Several areas. Obviously, the first one is the improvements to parking. You know, that the parking on Chestnut Street has been a concern for many years for the residents. Secondly, I love the fact that there are so many different facets of the proposed park improvements that will help residents of all ages. You know, I, I think that's just such a key factor, which I hope will raise the support and interest of the voters when it comes time to, you know, get final approvals on this. But, you know, I think that there's been a lot of work put into this, and I know that, you know, there have been concerns about, you know, what the future of Marshall Park might be, but I just think that what is being proposed is, you know, such multi-level, multi-generational improvements that it's definitely worth working toward.
Okay. And I don't have any other questions. I think it's pretty clear that you're very qualified. Your experience in town government tells me you have some thick skin, so that when people show up and question your integrity and call you a liar or tell you should resign from different things, that you will have the thickness to respond appropriately or not at all. So I don't have any questions for you, and is there, I'll start with the motion. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion to appoint, is it, it's an appointment, right?
Yeah.
Appoint Anita to the Parks Commission through May of 2024.
Yes. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. We have a, we have a motion and a second. This is, will be roll call. If you don't mind, I'll take the roll call for your board as well. So starting with the Parks Commission, Anna Lockwood?
Aye.
Karen Menard?
Aye.
Chris Sullivan?
Aye.
Selectman Emke?
Aye.
Selectman NuZolo?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And an aye for myself, Michael Ray Jeffries. All right. Congratulations. So the next step is to go to the town clerk and get sworn in, and then be sure to get signed up for town email. That's really important to do. And then I'm sure you're in good hands with, with the members beside you and the one on the screen behind us on how to get started with, with some good work. So thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
All right. And Anna, do you want to take the opportunity to adjourn your meeting?
Yes. Would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Chris?
Actually, you know what? I don't, I'm gonna, Chris, I, we do have another, we, no, I don't, you don't need that? No, because I think Chris is gonna jump off.
Okay, okay. So I make the motion to adjourn the select, the Park Commission meeting at 7:25.
Second.
All right. Chris Sullivan?
Aye.
Karen Menard?
Aye.
An aye for myself. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Well, Anna, don't go too far away.
There we go. Let's, that's the next item of the agenda.
So you're next on our agenda. So we've asked you to come here tonight because there's an article, there's an article that's and that's being requested for the special town meeting coming up next month on November the 14th, to remind everyone at 7:00 PM, November 14th, 7:00 PM. But you have an article that's coming up on the warrant related to a park grant and some ARPA funding. So if you can just explain this article to us, you know, why, given that ARPA is distributed by executives, not through city council or through town meeting, you know, why we're in this position where we're asking what looks to be an ARPA distribution via town meeting?
So the article does have the ARPA funds, it also addresses the funding that we received for engineering last November, and also talks about the ability for us to submit a grant application on behalf of the town. And those articles, that does not have any financial effect currently, because it's not going to affect our budget. We're not asking for new money, and I think that's what's important to know. There's no new money here. And what the person who's managing the applications, who I'm working with, what she, the way she expressed me was that they were looking, the state is looking for a town meeting vote to acknowledge everything that has been done. And usually, you know, funds get appropriated through town meeting vote, and the ARPA funds is a little bit, is a different type of source of money, and that's the purpose of that goal is, of that article is to just, for town meeting to say, we see this is happening and we are okay with, but it's more of an acknowledgement of all these things that are happening.
Okay. So basically, what the vote does is it confirms for the purpose of this grant that the million dollars that were committed to the Parks Commission, or is related to Marshall Park, that the town meeting is saying, yes, we're aware of this, and we don't have a conflict with this. Now, if somehow the vote fails, the only impact is on your ability to get grant money.
Right.
And not on the money that's already been committed.
Right. Well, or at least this grant. If the vote fails and they, you know, I don't, I don't know what they would come back with it, because, you know, the money is appropriate, so, but we'll have other grants that we can apply to, that, you know, we can use that as a matching fund.
Okay.
So the other piece to it as well, they're asking us to, for the town meeting to designate the park as Chapter 45, Article 3 or something of that nature.
Section 3.
Section 3. And again, this park was purchased by the town in 1913. It was, it has a deed restriction, which is even stronger than any government decision that it's all there. So there is no, actually, actions happening with this vote. It's more of an acknowledgement.
Okay. So the only reason why someone would vote against this is because they really want the rest of the money for Marshall Park to come out of their own pocket and to not come out of the collective pockets of whatever grant awarding authority there are.
Right. And not coming from, and the money not come from federal government. We need to get some money back, so.
Yeah, but it doesn't undo the money that the select board's already been providing.
It doesn't undo, no.
Okay. All right. I want to turn to my fellow colleagues for any questions they may have related to the presentation from the chair of the Parks Commission.
Yeah, this just feels like unnecessary. It feels funny.
You know?
It even says to reauthorize.
Right.
Like, like the 184,000 was already approved.
By town meeting.
At a special town meeting.
Yeah.
And now, I mean, it just.
You know, being on, you know, the person who I'm working with, she's very nice and she's very diligent. I, I think her goal is to make sure that once we get, once, and I'm hoping that we'll get all the $500,000 that we applied for, that there is nothing that can go wrong. So I think her intentions are, let's just get this vote. You know, it seems like an easier thing because there is no new money appropriation, and I think her intention is, you know, whenever this gets out of it, no one can say anything about it, and no one comes back. no one can say anything about it and no one comes back to the town asking for the money back because there wasn't a vote. I think that's her honest intention.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it could be cleaned up to take out at least the hundred and eighty-four thousand because it's, it's been done. Just, uh, I'm just worried you're, how the vote would go or even though it doesn't affect money that, that the select board has allocated. And then there's, there's three parts to this, as you mentioned, right? There's the, the ARPA and the hundred and eighty-four thousand, the, uh, the hundred Chestnut Street that was deeded in nineteen thirteen. And then the third thing was that the Parks Commissioner Select Board can apply for other grants. Is there any concern that having those combined could cause the vote to go, does it make sense to break them out, to clean it up at all?
So town council worked on this.
Yeah.
On the language with Melissa. And, you know, I'm gonna leave it to them. I don't want to.
Did you explore that with, with town council?
I, I did. And, and, you know, and town council said, you know, if you want the five hundred thousand dollars, you do what they ask. And, you know, and I can't disagree with them. You know, if they, if they ask me to do a pilgrim walking to Boston, I'll do it. It's five hundred thousand dollars. And that's the thing. I think the message to town meeting is, you know, there's no new money here. It's really, they, the, the state wants to make sure you know all this is happening. But you know, so we just need to tell them.
It seems so silly to me. It's, and I don't want to set a precedent of, we've already allocated funds, but yes, we have to go to a town meeting, which happens twice a year, you know, you know, for any other future situation.
But if they're willing to give me five hundred thousand dollars that we can apply to the, to the park, I, I, you know.
So I do, I want to throw in here too, um, in sort of defense of, and first of all, Melissa, um, the woman that Anna just mentioned, she's the woman from the state that we're working with for the grant. She's not somebody from town. Um, you know, ARPA is new. You know, it's not something that's been around for years and years in terms of the way you're giving it to us. The grant actually has, um, a section in it that says there's going to be a town vote. And I do think that Anna is correct in everything that she said and, and why it, um, the state is asking us to, to do it this way. And that is, I don't think they knew what to do with us when we came. Our application was extremely thorough. We had, um, hired, um, Wola to assist us with it. Anna and I spent a tremendous number of hours going through this. So I think when they went through it, and the only thing that really could stick out to them was we didn't, other than the hundred and eighty-four thousand, we didn't have another vote. So I, I think Adam Costa is correct when he says, give them what they want. If they want to vote, let's bring it to the town and get a vote. We haven't had, um, anybody at our meetings, uh, I don't think we've ever really had anybody that's against this project. So I don't think that we're going to hit, you know, resistance in some of it. And again, I think the deed language, um, is, is such that it, it's deeded as a park and.
Forever.
Forever. It's park and playground forever. And that's exactly what we're doing. So, um, I'm not as worried about having them lumped together. Because at the end of the day, if, even if we had them pulled apart, if one doesn't pass, we've got to come up with plan B. And that's, you know, as Mr. Jeffrey said, um, look to the taxpayers versus.
You know, I know you're going to apply for a number of grants, right? Do you know if any of the other grants are going to have a similar?
So, well, but you know, yes and no. Like, we're going to apply for the same grants. Most of the grants are coming from the state. But, you know, this is the only one that has the ARPA funds as a matching grant. So that wouldn't be, um, that, 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 that part is not going to play again. And now that we have had this vote, we already have the vote, right? So these things will no longer apply.
I think it is because one of the concerns I had was that the ARPA money was dependent on this vote and clearing that up, I think, is important.
I'm sorry.
But they can't, they can't rescind the ARPA money, even if, if the vote doesn't pass at special town meeting.
Yeah.
So that, that clarification.
Yeah.
I think, um, is important to make.
Use it for other grants because there are other grants that we're applying to.
I mean, I can understand how we're in this situation because we're not funding it the way towns normally fund projects like this. So if in their requirements, they say, you know, we need a town meeting vote because that's how, you know, ninety-nine percent of these types of projects are funded, then fine. I mean, let's, you know, put it before town meeting. We can, you know, show to them that town meeting is at least aware that we're financing it this way and they're in support of the project, um, and get half a million dollars. I mean, if that's what we have to do for that much money, then fine, let's do it. And I think it's also, um, I don't think it's, I think this is such a unique case that, that we're not really sort of creating any precedent here. So I'm not concerned about it at all. I mean, is it necessary? No. But, you know, I don't think it's that much work for the amount of money we're asking for. So.
But I can understand why it's confusing and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I absolutely appreciate, uh, uh, Ms. Emke's points with regard to the concern, you know, that, you know, it may be unnecessary, but, uh, in balancing all of the, uh, considerations, uh, you know, yes, give them what they want. But I, if I understand, Renee, your concern is that the, uh, town meeting might think that they can somehow rescind the one million. So I mean.
That's what I thought initially.
Yeah. So maybe some kind of language that says, uh, you know, as previously voted under article four, four, which would be in addition to the sum already committed by the select board. So it makes it more clear. Some kind of language like that makes it absolutely more clear that.
Sure.
That ARPA money is beyond the reach of the town meeting. Um, you know, so in spirit, I totally support this. So I would recommend, you know, yes, getting, uh, getting this on there, but also, and also recommend it, but, um, that we're getting ahead a little bit, but maybe with some fine tuning.
Yeah. No, that's a really good feedback.
Okay.
And I see Heather writing notes, but I was going to watch the meeting and also, do you want me to send the email to town council or do, would you like to do it?
If you can.
I'll do that.
All right. Thanks.
Good. I'll do it. I'll watch it and I'll write down exactly what was said.
All right. I, um, I'm going to add to what Mr. Franco just said. I think that your town meeting, um, presentation is, as I'm like sitting here making notes, is, uh, pretty clear to me in terms of what I would suggest. So I would recommend that at town meeting, you might want to take the approach of, um, taking a, you know, slide or two to explain what the park proposal is, um, maybe taking a slide of how you guys got here. And then a slide on why this is at special town meeting. And then two slides, what does a yes vote do? What does a no vote do? And just make it clear. Cause I think that, you know, I don't think that what you're giving, it's, this looks complicated. But if you break it down, you take advantage of the opportunity to get some, um, publicity on what you guys are trying to accomplish. But just tell people straight up, if you vote no, this is the impact. You vote yes, this is the impact.
That's a good feedback.
Yep.
Yeah. No, that, that's really good. And you know, last year when we, we passed the hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, we said, we need this money now to go out and start applying for, for fun, for grants and coming back to the town meeting and say, look, we did just that.
Yep.
So I think it, it goes with what we've been saying. So no, that's really good feedback too. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments?
Just, uh, add on to, um, what's already been said, but that's, I think to the voter, it is going to appear confusing and redundant because of these actions that have already taken place. But I have confidence in the Park Commission, especially from previous presentations, town meeting. I think you're going to answer all the questions ahead of time and it will make it more clear why this is needed. I think, uh, regarding the question about whether this is necessary for other grants, this is a requirement for this grant. So I think that needs to be made clear as well. This is not a normal process for applying for all grants as well. And, um, that will help clear up that, that confusion. And it was part of a vote, the vote for the Saliba property, which was also through the same grant, the park grant. And, um, it was, we were definitely had to do a town meeting vote because that included borrowing for that property and we hadn't purchased that property. So it was part of the purchase and sale agreement for it as well and to designate a park property.
All right. Mr. Franco?
Yeah, just, I, I mean, I also see a little bit, you know, again, this is what they want. And I kind of see the logic of sort of like getting a fresh reendorsement by the town meeting, saying, yes, we're all still behind this. Here's a reaffirmation. And you know, that's fresh off the presses for the people considering the grant. Secondly, I take it that if you do need it for other grants, your point is taken, uh, Madam Town Manager too, that like, it's needed for this grant. So that, that's what matters. But if it is needed for future grants, uh, you have that freshly coined reendorsement that I think would probably satisfy, I'm guessing.
Definitely. I mean, part of our application was, you know, we had, I, I think you guys remember when I had to answer some, some question was from Mr. Alonso, like, why do we need this money, you know, the ARPA money now? And it's because it's a construction grant. So we need to prove that we have the support from the, you know, select board, that we have the support from town meetings. So part of our narrative was, you know, the hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars that came last year, we had an eighty-eight percent vote, yes. And so, yes, that plays a big role in their making decisions because they don't want to sign money that, for constructions that will not happen. That they don't have, they don't feel like the town is going to support that. It's just an idea of improving a park. I mean, we have, when I met the gentleman from the state at Marshall Park, I brought the blueprints, you know, for what we have, all the schematic designs. And, and that's part of showing that this is a real plan. This is something that we are moving forward that the town is behind. So, yeah. Thank you.
My reason for asking about other grants was really about timing because we only have two town meetings a year. So it's something you have to think ahead. Um, and my only other comment is, in reading this, I, I think, again, I want to emphasize it. I think it's really important to let people know, because it's not obvious to me in reading this, that the hundred and eighty-four thousand and the one million of ARPA, that, that is done deal.
Right.
That has nothing to do with this vote because I, I don't get that from reading. And that was, when I first saw this, I was like, wait, they're trying to take the ARPA money back?
Right. Yeah. And I don't think I ever heard of a town meeting vote reautorizing money that has been authorized.
No, that's, that was the, yeah.
If it's going to happen, it's going to happen under our watch. So, you know.
Well, it's a nice, pretty, uh, pretty package with a nice bow on top for, uh, Melissa. So.
Right. Thank you.
Helps us get half a million dollars, then hopefully this only takes a couple of minutes at town meeting and only waste a collective, you know.
It's intimidating when you see.
Oh, we should see the emails between, I mean, I spoke with her several times. I know town council has spoken with her and exchanged emails with her. So, yeah, that money better come. But that's not the only one. We have another one. We have a million, we have a grant that's for a million dollars. And that's going to be due in January or February. Um, and we also have an ADA grant that it's up to two hundred thousand dollars. So we're all looking for those prior to next, to twenty twenty-four town meeting.
Good.
So we have a lot of work and ahead of us.
Excellent. All right. Well, thank you both.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Same to you. All right. So we're going to turn to the town manager for interviews, appointments, reappointments. And then we're going to stay with the town manager for announcements and then the town manager's report.
So for the interviews, appointments, reappointments, unfortunately, our candidate for the cemetery seasonal labor position withdrew. She took another position.
Okay. I'm sorry to hear that.
Yes.
She had a wonderful name.
Yes.
All right. So to the town manager for announcements and the town manager's report.
Also, as part of that, um, our interim conservation administrator, Leah Gregor, Gregorov, has, um, resigned also. So she was an interim person that she has another full-time position, um, and she relocated to Western Mass. Uh, so she wasn't able to keep up with, um, continuing to do that role. So, um, we've been making all efforts to reach out to other area towns and see if any, um, conservation administrators from other towns have the capacity to take on some hours and do that similar type role until we fill it permanently and are still pursuing, um, and trying to work towards a candidate to fill that role as well. For meetings, events and other announcements, the ribbon cutting ceremony for the new ADA patio at the Adult Activity Center is on Wednesday, October eleventh at twelve P M. And that's, so that's tomorrow, rain or shine. And it looks like the weather is going to be sunny. So have a nice day for that, that event. The Lunenburg Business Association will be holding the trunk or treat event again this year on Saturday, October twenty-eighth. That's noon until three P M. The Lunenburg High School parking, upper parking lot. And registration for the event is required and we'll be putting this information on our website and social media as well. And that will see, show how to register for the event. Halloween trick or treating will be Tuesday, October thirty-first from sixty-eight, six to eight P M. Yard waste days started this past Saturday and will be every Saturday until November eighteenth from eight A M. until four P M. And that's at Young's Road, which is the capped landfill, so behind Tri-Town, that area. The planning board will be holding their public hearing for the agricultural commission and planning board special town meeting articles on Monday, October thirtieth, and that will be at six P M. in this meeting room at town hall. The special town meeting is Tuesday, November fourteenth at seven P M. at the middle school, high school auditorium. And the finance committee will be holding their public hearing this Thursday on the articles, uh, at seven P M. in this meeting room. Employee highlights, our land use directors' last official day in the office is this Thursday, October twelfth. I want to thank Adam for the last nine years he has dedicated in service to the town, for his professionalism, for explaining complicated zoning issues in a way that everyone can understand, and his great sense of humor. All the staff will miss working with him. So thank you, Adam. The DPW employees assisted Mayor Wood in reconstruction, reconstructing a drainage pipe on Gibson Street that was damaged during the rain event on September eleventh. The road was supposed to be closed all day today and reopening tomorrow, but having the DPW crew assist allowed the road to be opened earlier than expected. So thank you to the DPW employees for assisting on this project and making it go smoother and accomplishing it quicker than expected. Tomorrow is the ribbon cutting ceremony for the new ADA outdoor patio at the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center. And I would be remiss not mentioning it here. In addition to what will be expressed at tomorrow's meeting, all the contributions of past and current employees for this project. Past DPW director, Rob Oliver, began the capital planning process for this project with council and aging director, Sue Doherty. The current DPW director, Bill Bernard, continued it. And the current facilities director, Chris Ruth, has brought it to the finish line. Chris has done a lot of work with the engineering firm, with the assistant town manager and putting together the bid package, with the contractor after the project was awarded, making sure the project was finished on time. The facilities technician, Don Gagny, has also helped with the project in making sure it was ready for tomorrow. The council and aging director, Sue Doherty, has been involved intimately with all aspects of this project and was invested in making sure this was complete by tomorrow as well. It should not go unnoticed, all the details that went into tomorrow, and I want to thank Sue in advance for her attention to all those details. Boarding committee, commission vacancies. This is a list of all the current vacancies. Architectural Preservation District Commission, one vacancy. Cemetery Commission, one vacancy until the next annual town election. Two vacancies on the finance committee, one regular member and one associate vacancy for Green Communities Committee. One member-at-large vacancy for the open space committee and one vacancy on the personnel committee. Anyone interested can find the volunteer application on the town website, complete the form and, and submit it to the select board's office. If you have any questions on the roles and responsibilities, you can contact the office at nine seven eight, five eight two, four one three zero, extension one four four. For employment opportunities for the town, we have the following openings. The Assistant to Suer Business Manager, which is nineteen hours a week, Assistant Town Accountant, which is thirty-two hours a week, Assistant Meal Site Manager, which is nineteen and a half hours a week, Conservation Administrator, which is thirty-six hours a week, Facility Superintendent, which is forty hours a week, Finance Director, which is forty hours a week, Heavy Equipment Operators, which is forty hours a week, Land Use Director, forty hours a week, and Principal Assessor, forty hours a week. Seasonal Cemetery Librarians, which, um, that will be concluding in the near future. So I'm not sure we'll be able to fill those positions before the season ends. But the DPW director has lined up the, um, and I believe the Cemetery Commission has a role in that, lining up the, um, some assistance from the Western County Jail for, which we've used in the past. Videographer positions, which is two to ten hours a week. More information on each of these positions. positions can be found on the website under Job Opportunities. An update on the Community Compact Best Practice Grant application. I received a notification from the Lieutenant Governor today that they approved the request to update our financial management policies and procedures and to create a bridge and culvert management plan. Based on a communication I received from Sean Cronin, who is the Senior Deputy Commissioner of Local Services, they were able to fund the bridge and culvert management plan through the best practices funding, but will be utilizing the Department of Local Services staff to handle the financial management policies and procedures update instead of the call-in center. And just, this is not in my written report, the website, like, was discussed earlier, that launched today. So I think it looks great, as the board does. Cara McCarthy did an excellent job, and she's worked with departments on all of their information. She also had to track every single change since a few months ago, because it all transitioned, and to keep a log of all those changes, to make sure they were on the new website, and has worked with the town clerk's office, because they have a role on posting the agendas and the minutes to the site. So with the new, new processes, attended trainings, our IT vendor also, Sue's IT, Casey Chisholm, was involved as well in those meetings with Civic Plus and, and the department heads as well, and reviewing all the pages to make sure that information is accurate. As, with anything, everything is a work in progress, so if there are future changes that needs to be made, they'll go through Cara McCarthy, and we'll go from there. But I think it's a big improvement from what it was.
Okay.
For Munis, an update on that. We had our upgrade to Munis last week. It was expected to be one day, definitely down. It was down for two days and spelled over into a third due to some critical issues that were, when it went, when it went live. And most of those have been resolved. There's still some outstanding, but they've been escalated to, through the chain at Tyler Tech, because it's them who have to resolve these from a programming standpoint. But we, payroll went through today with no issues, so that's very important. I want employees to know that. You'll be getting paid. And so, we'll be working through those. But we went from a very old version of Munis to the newer version in the cloud. So I think all in all, it went as well as to be expected. With any kind of upgrade, you're gonna be working through kinks. And people had a period of time to go through the testing phase, but until you really get into it, you might discover things that aren't working the way you used to utilize them. So. And I want to address the finance director position and staffing for that role, as I understand there's been some discussion outside of meetings about what that looks like going forward. Karen Broshu, as everyone knows, has continued on as the interim finance director. She is limited based on her retirement. She's capped at earning so much once you're retired. And so she's at a point where she is approximately, depending on, and it's a unique way that it's worded, in the, what you can earn for, after retirement is on what the current salary is. So that has to come from the town. And that will be, that will depend, that will stipulate how much she can work, how many hours going forward. So she has, we approximate around 100 and, 120 hours remaining. And meeting with her and our consultant, because we've also hired our consulting firm for accounting, they've been assisting for the Assistant Town Accountant role primarily, and that took that off of Karen's plate, which was time-consuming, but is not the role the finance director should be assuming. And that consulting company also helped when Karen was on vacation, processing warrants and such. So I've met with Julie Costello of the consulting firm, Karen, and Julie Beliveau, and so we have a simulation of a, a plan going forward. Karen will be focusing on closing FY23. That's her highest priority, is to get that complete. And so the Assistant Town Accountant, Steve Barrett, is the person who has been doing that role, will be taking on more responsibilities, things that can be done by an Assistant Town Accountant, that, but normally everyone goes to Karen for. And it's just been something, because she's so good at her job, that, and has assumed those over time, that those will be moved over to Steve, that will alleviate some of that, that time restriction on her time. So we are looking at all avenues for hiring. Unfortunately, we have had a very limited pool since April for that position and not qualified for filling it.
So what's your expectation? Then you said 120 hours. You're shifting kind of more work to the consultant, so when do you, what's the date that you're assuming that Karen's going to be out of time?
So she's estimating around 30 hours, depending on Munis, any Munis issues running into, because of the upgrade. So that, that could be in addition to 30. So remaining 70 to, to 90 hours for the remainder of the year. That's not too far off from where we expected her to be working, one to two days a week. So Julie Costello will, will be helping out where she can. She may have a change in her schedule that will alleviate some time for her in November. So if that does happen, then we'll depend more on her as a, the town accountant, as we're running out of time with Karen.
Okay. Any questions to the town manager? Just as a point of clarification, I had asked the town manager to prepare for tonight a detailed update on kind of the actions that are being taken to address the HR concerns, HR concerns being vacancies. And, and I know that there were additional requests that members submitted, that they wanted to make sure was in that report. So we did extend that timeline out to next week. Now, I do need to confirm, though, based on attendance, if that's going to work well next week, it may need to be the 24th instead. But I need to check with Mr. Alonso on his availability next week.
All right. The warrant needs to be signed by next week.
Yes.
To get it for interim.
By when?
Next Tuesday. That's on the, the calendar, for it to be finalized, all the votes taken.
Votes not signed.
Votes and signing, so we can get it to the printer, to print and get out to all the residents.
So, I mean, we're gonna... Normally tonight, we would take the votes and recommendations, so that way next week we see the draft of what the, what it's all gonna look like. Are we saying we can wait till next week to do all the votes?
The votes can happen the same night as signing, because, you know, new information. The public hearing is Thursday with the finance committee, and, but the vote and, on the, for the board to make final recommendations is on the 17th.
Okay.
So it's on tonight's agenda, in case you have already made decisions on how you're gonna vote on recommendations. That can be done now and next week.
Yeah, we're gonna take some tonight. We're gonna go through as many as we can today. And then if we need, if we have full membership, well, I know we're only gonna have four members next week. But we can, um, the way that I'll do it, because I think Ms. Imke, you're not here next week. So what I can do is take votes tonight and then take votes with Mr. Alonso next week, so that way we have five to zero, or not five to zero, but five votes for everything, not just four. So we can take care of that next week.
Yeah, I'm more worried about the physical signing part next week.
Only three of us have to physically sign it.
Will you have three physically here? I don't know.
Yes, we don't know.
At most, you will have three physically here.
Yep. Yep. At most, we will. Correct. That's correct.
And it, it can be the next day or the Thursday.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah. Which it likely will, because if there's, I still have to modify it after any additional votes need to be taken.
I have faith in FedEx, Renee, so.
FedEx, not the, the postal service, okay.
We're overnighting it to Caesar, and he's overnighting it back.
Yeah.
He'll get signed.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll get that taken care of. All right. Anything else from the town manager?
No.
Okay. All right. So we're going to, um, we're gonna... I'm looking for where it's at in the agenda. Am I missing this?
Yeah.
Each student printout.
Yeah. Am I missing the rest of this agenda? I'm like, I know we had some other stuff up here. All right. Thank you, Heather.
We're onto approval of minutes, right?
Yep. So approval of minutes for August the 8th.
Um...
This was...
Only Lou and I and Tom were there. Can we do that this week or no?
Yeah, so long as, um, we watch, so long as at least Caesar, I know I...
I left the meeting. I reviewed the minutes, but I will defer to you guys, because you were here in person, but I did do both of those things.
I was not here either.
A board can still take a vote.
Right.
If you weren't present at the meeting. An example is the Board of Assessors. Even though they weren't at, were members even of a board at that time, they can still take a vote as to the form of the minutes.
So you're, you're comfortable endorsing the minutes, is it?
I am. Are you? You chaired that meeting?
Oh, I'm very comfortable endorsing them. I'm just, I'm just saying, as someone, you're saying, as somebody who wasn't here but wants to meet, you'd be good.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a motion?
All right, in that case, oh, were you gonna make the motion?
I, I will move to approve the minutes of August 8th, 2023.
Second. Any additional discussion? All right, as many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Okay. This should be a warrants week for us.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Heather. I didn't see the stack over there. All right. So we have a payroll deduction warrant. I don't want to start with payroll deduction. We have a payroll warrant in the amount of $986,208.24. We have a payrolls deduction warrant in the amount of $687,871.84. We have an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $98,161.23. Is there any way that we can get Munis to, although, you know, select board member or, a selectman's okay, because we are selectmen.
I can see.
But not every member of the select board is a select man. All right. Okay. Action items. Any action items tonight? All right, I have one. And I'm just picking this one up to the town manager. I know that we had met with the cemetery commissioners almost a month ago now, and there was like a course of action that was outlined on what we're gonna do. So my question is, how long does it take to cut the cemeteries using existing equipment? And I know that this is a question that's being worked on with the DPW director and Cemetery Superintendent, but there remains to be no answer. So.
I think the question, they were gonna use Lakeview.
Correct.
To, and that was gonna show how long it took out at once to do it.
My understanding is that there's been some complications with that actually happening. So...
I don't think so, because we got an email that it was complete.
Okay. So do we have an answer to the question?
No, we were invited to their next meeting.
Meeting on Thursday?
Yeah.
All right.
On the 19th.
All right. So we will expect to have an answer on the 19th?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, committee reports. Any committee reports this evening?
Short one. The school committee met last week. They approved the capital plan as proposed, with a prioritization to happen at the next meeting on the 18th, because again, they're doing this in the absence of Facilities Director, so.
Okay.
Planning board did not meet yesterday because of the holiday. I reached out to get an update on the Route 70 Bridge, and Brad Harris, who I reached out to, put me in touch with someone who is more familiar with that project, and I haven't received an update yet. But I'm trying to get that update, and once I do, I'll share it.
Thank you for your follow-up on that.
I attended Council on Aging earlier today. The big takeaway has already been covered. The big takeaway from that meeting, which is the ribbon cutting tomorrow. Just to also let people know that there will be seating inside, if that's a, a need, and they'll be serving hot dogs, too. I, I was, has to make a specific point of that. With, Master Plan Steering Committee met on the 5th. There is, I don't think it's tentative at this point. I think it's in stone, but we have more meetings for me to confirm this. A first big public meeting on the 2nd of November, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, tentative time there. And also tentative location is the library. This will all be nailed down a little bit. There's gonna be another meeting of the Master Plan Steering Committee on the 19th of October, after which I will be able to confirm these things. Or maybe even sooner I'll have the information, but, although, we need to meet to have that confirmed. So it will be after the 19th. At the November 2nd meeting, it's expected that the existing, existing conditions report should be done. That is, what is the current state of matters within the town. Included with that, there will, is a plan to be a five-foot by seven-foot model of the entire town in 3D, goes along the Z-axis, too. So that, that's gonna be interesting. I mean, just, just seeing that would be worth attendance. I will be attending anyway. But there is a Facebook page for the Master Plan Committee. I, you'll have to search that at the moment. I actually haven't gone to it. There is going to be a dedicated website, the URL for which will be planlunenburg.com. It's not live yet. I checked as early as, earlier today, as late as earlier today. That will be the planning-specific website, separate from the town website. So it's its own dedicated website. And then just expect updates on the regular from me as things progress with the Master Plan Steering Committee.
Okay. Do you have any committee reports?
The Capital Planning Committee set their next meeting. It's October 23rd.
Okay. Minister Lunenburg designed to not meet. Mr. Allison, though, and I did, to go over the computer specifications for the product that needs to be ordered. And then this Thursday, I will be at the Finance Committee meeting to discuss the article that we are putting on the warrant related to Special Stabilization Fund. All right. Old business. This is the fun part. All right. So disposition of town properties. So in our Google Drive, hopefully everyone has had the opportunity from their last meeting to go and take a look at some of these properties. So in our files folder, I think they're called properties. I'm trying to get to it. Town properties. And if we go to our list of select, not select board owned properties, that's too extensive. If you go into the, I think it's the town properties PDF. Yep. All right. So the question, and I did not reach out to the board between meetings to see if we can schedule this, but I am looking to see if we can schedule something for this week, if at all possible. So I want to check first with Ms. Selectman Imke. Do you have availability on Saturday?
I won't be in town.
So you're gonna be out of town on Saturday? So you're gonna be out of town on Saturday? Mr. Frank, do you?
I originally had availability on Saturday. I no longer do. Uh, something has come up, so.
Okay.
Not an emergency, but a conflict.
Well, let's make a pact. Why don't we come to an agreement? Um, let's plan a site visit of Whalem, and let's just all individually take care of this. Um, so the forty-two acres, let's just walk through what's on the list. Um, the sixty-six point five acres at six seventy-one West Street. Um, so how do you get to it? So if you, if you go in our Google Drive and you look at the, um, Select Board Own Properties map, okay? So if we go into this map and we zoom in, and I'll see if this map, uh, how well we can read. All right, so if we go into the, the southwest corner, and there is a parcel, uh, that, uh, is, let me point to it. It's this one.
Yep.
Okay, so this parcel, so it's a kind of a weird-shaped parcel. It's the intersection, if, as we look at this, uh, it looks to touch, or it doesn't look, it touches West Street. Uh, it's at the intersection of West and, and Pleasant, and it also touches Pratt Street. So this touches, um, West Street at, I think, uh, three different points. It touches, um, Pleasant Street right at the intersection, and then it touches, um, Pratt Street at two different points. It touches Whalem Road at, I believe, one point. So if this is a wooded parcel, so if you're coming down West Street from Lakeview, and when you get to the bottom of the hill, you kinda take that left, and then you take, you know, as you start coming straight again to go up the little hill, this is all that property to your left. So you'll see the wetlands. The entrance to it is basically at the intersection of Pleasant Street. So it looks like someone's driveway. You can park as you come around, again, the hill from west, come around that corner. Just as you start to bend at the, where the hill starts to go up, there's a little, like, kinda drive-off area. You can park there, and there's trails. So this is a sixty-six acre parcel, uh, that I would encourage the board to walk. Uh, the other area is located at two twenty-five Pleasant Street. So as you look at that map, this is the parcel that looks like same region, an upside-down V. Okay? So, um, it is this parcel. So this is on Pleasant Street, just as you hit that sharp bend on Pleasant, going, uh, in the direction away from west, going towards Mass Ave. So we hit that sharp bend where there's usually some cows to your left-hand side, and you start going, it's flat, and it starts going downhill. This is all the land that you see behind those houses. So what you're going to see at that bend is, is, there's two houses right at the bend. We have land that's between those two houses. And then after, uh, those two houses, there's a big break, uh, right across from the dairy. And then there's, um, that's another entrance to the, to the property. So this is the land we own in that area, so I encourage us to take the opportunity to walk that. And then the, the third area that I would like to draw your attention to is the Youngs Road. So as we talked about the leaf, um, leaf drop-off occurring on Youngs Road, this is that property. So if we go back to that map, and then now we're looking at the bottom, kinda looks like a puzzle piece, right, in this parcel right here. So, uh, if we think about where the old dump used to be on Youngs Road, you have the Tri-Town, Old Tri-Town Theater, which is now, uh, multifamily, multi-story buildings. Immediately after that is a driveway. Um, and so going down that driveway, this is the parcel, the old dump, that's in the back. So I would encourage members, uh, to, to go this weekend, if you're around while the dump is available. If not, to reach out to the DPW Director, uh, and/or the town manager to see about, uh, if we can, if any of you can get access to it, um, before the weekend. Okay, so at our next meeting...
What, what are we looking for, like?
Just, just getting familiarized with what's there. So the point is to get, so the, the reason why I'm bringing this up, and I know I keep bringing this up over the years, but I'm committed to getting to a resolution on this. Um, so how this was born was, uh, we were in the process, we had a really, um, great open space committee that was taking a really good stance in looking at some of these properties that were held under the care and custody of the Select Board, and, uh, moving some of them into conservation. Uh, it was a really good effort, uh, maintains open space in our community, but it highlights the fact that the Select Board needs to have a disposition for some of these properties. So why are we holding this land? Is this a good target for conservation? Is this a target for, you know, are we holding this for a future school? Are we holding it for a future police department? That we need to have some kind of purpose in why we're holding this property, or, uh, we need to dispose of it, or, uh, figure out its long-term disposition. So, you know, the, the vision that I have in my mind is that we'll create a policy that says, hey, here's our intent. Of course, future boards can always change it. But what I would like for us to get in the process of doing is holding property for a reason. Um, you know, we're land banking quite a bit of properties in town, and we need to think about future developmental needs, uh, for the community. And so what I'm hoping that we can do is we get familiarized with the twenty-seven Youngs Road. It's a brownfield. You know, what, what solar panels could look like there, other purposes of how to redevelop a brownfield. Uh, the city of Lynn is currently going through a process of turning their old dump, uh, into a park. Um, I'm not suggesting that we do the same, but I'm just saying, there's a lot of different purposes for it. As we think about this other parcel that has multiple points of access into it, um, that's on, uh, West Street. You know, there's many things that we could do with this, because there's multiple points of access to it. Um, and so as we think about where all municipal buildings are, right now, they're pretty concentrated in the center of town. Um, but, you know, in the future, if we fast forward and have faith and confidence that America will be here for the rest of humanity, um, at some point, we're going to need another police department and, or a police annex and fire annex. We're gonna need more schools, so what land are we holding for that? So that way, we're not in fifty years or seventy-five years, taking land from eminent domain and taking it from people. And then the other thing is this parcel on West Street, it has a great view, looking over to Walmart area. It's forty acres of land. It's currently being haved and maintained. Um, but we don't have any really property plans for who is haying and maintaining it. Um, same thing with the Woodruff property. Some of that's also being haved and maintained, and we have no idea who's doing it. And so I think this is also to start the conversation of, you know, sometimes status quo is okay. And if the farmers have figured out a system to make good use of the land, then hey, let's, sometimes the answer could very well be let them keep doing it. Why, why mess up something that's not broke? Um, but, you know, we could discover in the process that, you know, uh, someone has monopolized these fields, because no one else knows that they're available. And so, you know, could they be made available to other people? Uh, I think another thing for us to consider is as we think about development of Marshall Park, other properties in town, Slibor Property. Um, you know, some of these parcels might be ideal for some of these land companies in town to be able to mine. And, and maybe we do some kinda trade-off with them of, take sand from here, in exchange, we get something done there. So I think it's just better for us to familiarize ourselves with some of these, um, parcels that we have as we start that, that, or as we continue the conversation. So I'm expecting that we're gonna keep revisiting this throughout the, uh, throughout the year, but I hope that before the snow falls, everyone has the opportunity to check them out. And even when the does, snow does fall, Woodruff property is heavily utilized in the winter, it seems. Or mildly utilized in the winter. All right, I need your second page. Okay, so any questions on kind of this, and we all can hopefully find the time to do this, uh, over the next couple of weeks? And, um, you know, of course, if you wanna be super zealous, uh, you can go ahead and look at the other things that we've pulled out at, um, Town Center, which we've already done that site visit in the past, or for the newer members. We can take a look at Hickory Hills area, uh, the property that we have out there, and then property that we have around the Lake Shirley area, which we have quite a few parcels around Lake Shirley. Okay? All right. And, uh, I'm not a, you know, sometimes the answer is to sell, and sometimes the answer is to, uh, you know, perhaps there's some conservation land that people have been, you know, gotten used to looking at across the street at some forest, and maybe we just need to, you know, confirm that status. All right, I don't have anything else on that topic. Any questions from the board? All right. Going back to the agenda, we're gonna go through the special town meeting warrant article. So if we go into, I think, last week, uh, we have the full list of the, uh, draft special town meeting warrant articles. It's a PDF. I know that we still have a, um, typo in here, uh, when it comes to N-O-P. There's no P. So for the purpose of tonight, Q is P and R is Q and et cetera. All right, so we're gonna go down the list, and starting with number A, and I'll check with the town manager to see if you have any dollar amounts to fill into any things.
That was, that was corrected, so the version you should have in your drive is...
I didn't see it today.
It's there.
Oh.
Put it in.
Is, is this the order they'll be in?
That was, is up to the board.
Okay.
Um, but I would preface that with the, my recommendation is always to put the money articles at the very beginning. We need things to balance the budget or utilize, um, available, available funds.
In years past, hasn't the chair worked with the town manager to kinda come up with the organization and present it to the board?
Um, generally, it's been an order that I've placed in. Planning Board articles always are at the end. Um, the, and where they are in the bylaws is kind of in the order as well. Um, so, but, um, I understand that there's one Planning Board article that, um, will garner a lot of attention, so that may be one to be done earlier in the agenda, but that, I would need to have that finalized for Tuesday, before Tuesday, so that can be already.
Okay. All right. Why don't we just discuss it real quick? So i- i- I think the main thing is the Planning Board articles, and it's, um, which one was it? Was it O?
It was the very last one, the, the water supply protection.
All right, so perhaps we need to s- push P early in around uh, J. So squeeze it, make it the new J.
So municipal building design would be after?
Any other thoughts? Because that's all the money articles, then we get to...
There was one that came up at FinCom, Chris Menard, and I'm blanking on it. It was something related to the TCP roof.
That's earlier.
That's F.
Yeah, that's, that's F. He had some order, and it made sense when I heard it, and now I can't remember.
Oh, with, um, before, prior to the Capitol plan, I think it was.
Yeah, I think we need to go through, um, we probably, so what is currently J, the municipal building design? That should happen before we talk about that roof. So we might need to bump that up.
Oh, that's what it was, the municipal building design.
Yeah.
That it should be in conjunction with that, so.
Why don't we have that before, why don't we throw that in between, uh, E and F? I think the order, I think the order would be all the financial articles. Currently, what is listed as F should be the, should be, um, probably the new H or a new I, and then what's currently lifted as J should be the new H. If that makes sense. So that way, we go through all the financial articles except for things dealing with this roof. We hear the presentation from Municipal Building Design, and then we hit the roof. Does that follow?
It does. It just takes, yeah, moves a money article until after, because that is a money article.
I know.
Yeah.
And then we're moving up K further in the process, because that's a money article too. So, it's gonna be a whole reorganization here.
No, it's not a money article.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That's right. There's no money. That's right. Well, what's the voting threshold, then? Is it still two-thirds? For K?
No, that's only inappropriate. No, I would say not.
Right.
So it's a simple majority?
This is for a report at town meeting?
No, no, we're, we're talking about K.
It's an appropriation, so it should just be a majority.
For the municipal building design?
Uh, K is about parts.
Oh, my bad. Which one are you looking at?
It's today's folder.
Today's updated version, ten-four.
Oh, okay.
It's in today's meeting folder.
I did not see it there.
I didn't see it there either.
That's why I went to the previous one. Okay.
You still have a question?
No.
I'm sorry. I was like waiting for the other half. All right. Um, okay. So I think that makes pretty good sense for the most part, right? Okay. I still need your second page. All right. Um,
Votes.
So we're gonna go through the, um, each one, and, uh, see if we have recommendations tonight. So I'll make all the motions to make the process a bit easier. Um, so for now, I think we need to skip A. All right, so we're skipping A. Uh, I think we need to skip B and C. So now we have D.
Question, if I could, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, is tonight not our deadline to make some sort of disposition, even if it is to defer?
Our deadline is next week.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, so, um...
You could make a vote to defer to town meeting.
And then change it?
And change it next week.
All right. Do you guys wanna take that approach, defer the ones? That way we can secure those votes, and then, uh, all right, and then come back to them next week when we have more information?
If there's any risk, we might not have a quorum next week.
Okay. I move to defer, uh, article, and we're, um, as I say them tonight, I'm gonna say them in the order that they appear in front of us. I move to defer Article A, uh, recommendation to, uh, special town meeting.
Second.
Uh, any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, I move to, to thank you. Uh, motion passes. Um, I move to defer Article B to town meeting.
Second.
Any additional discussion? As many as aren't in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, I move to defer Article C to special town meeting.
Second.
Any, uh, additional discussions? As many as are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, D.
Second.
I move to rec- I move to recommend approval of Article D.
Second.
Let's have discussion.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I'm, uh, last week I was, I'm torn. So last week, I certainly, um, supported this being added to the article. I think that I'm still torn if this is the correct source of money, because I think we haven't made, we haven't given the public the opportunity to come before us to say, hey, there's these funds here, here's how I can use them. And so, you know, eighty, I think the fund only has about a hundred thousand dollars in there, something like that, a hundred and ten?
Currently. We'll, we'll keep accumulating money.
So...
This would be forty thousand, though, because it's, it'll be split with Lancaster.
I think that, do we have any, do we have any confirmation that Lancaster has already had a town meeting vote that's gonna appropriate forty thousand dollars to Town of Lunenburg for this? I think the answer is no. And so I think that we are trusting and hoping that Lancaster reimburses half. That's the current plan. But I mean, there's no guarantee that they're gonna do it, so I mean, we're on the hook for eighty thousand dollars.
Mr. Chair, can, is it possible to amend that to make, uh, the approval at town meeting contingent upon Lancaster's funding their half of it?
I think we can change the motion today to say that, or we can do a motion on the floor.
I like the idea, first of all, uh, because I'm torn on this thing too, as to the funding source. I mean, maybe defer this article and then introduce an amendment on the floor?
You know, I think sometimes it, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, however. I do think that our recommendations for town meeting is an important function of the Select Board, and that we should try as hard as we can to always make recommendations. And I think deferrals are, in my opinion, uh, the last, uh, resort when it comes to money articles that we just don't have all the numbers in, or when it comes to citizens' petitions that we don't have the information. So I would be less inclined to defer, I, I would be a no to defer this to town meeting. I think we have enough information to figure out if we wanna rec-... figure out if we wanna recommend it or not prior to town meeting. But I think we can also, I mean, it's our article, I mean, we can change the wording.
I do like the idea of making a contingent on Lancaster's participation. As far as funding source, I I can see this, making a case for this coming from ARPA because it's not, it, it deals with suicide prevention too, independent of any drug, alcohol abuse, any addiction whatsoever. That said, we don't have enough money in ARPA right now. There's, there's a lot of if then statements that I can see going in here, to use a scripting language, kind of.
I think the solution may be to get the article related to special purpose stabilization before this. And that gives the board the ability that if the, if we're aware that ARPA funds will be coming back to the board, that the board can consider this request through ARPA, or, I mean, obviously, we're not gonna know how we think, what we think about it. But if we have a strong enough opinion, it would at least give us grounds to recommend voting no. And I think on the floor, we can make the case that we think this could be better funded through ARPA. And I think we can all kind of read in that public setting what the majority is thinking in that environment.
But how, what would the vote?
So in other words.
How would it be posed to the town?
It would be a passover. That we could propose to pass it over.
Okay.
If we felt confident that we were gonna, if we were all saying this could be better funded through ARPA and ARPA funding was made available, I think we could vote to pass it over.
Okay.
So, but for now, I think we need to add in some verbiage about tying this to Lancaster.
Yeah, I agree.
So if, if Lancaster doesn't agree, and they don't appropriate the funds and it doesn't happen through this, okay, it's a element.
So I would say before that semicolon, put something like comma, contingent upon Lancaster's adopting their parallel provision or their corresponding article.
Or something along the line, and funds we made available contingent upon. To make it clear that, you know, the funds will be available contingent upon Lancaster's concurrence. Or however that can be worded.
But if we're gonna consider using, if we have ARPA funds available and we would consider using those, we could come back and discuss whether that's contingent or not?
Correct.
Is that right? Okay.
So, but that way, if it doesn't pass, then we have that language in here and that way, we would take it up on the floor of town meeting. Okay, that would give, I think, the voters the correct protection. Do you have those notes?
I'm trying to find out about Lancaster, cause it looks like they had a special town meeting on September eighteenth.
Good, let's see if they already did it. Alright, we'll come back. Let's come back to D. This sounds like Lou, you're getting a deferral on this one. Alright, so we have a potential amendment, do you need to look at it tonight or do you need to get back to us next week?
I'll get back to you.
Alright, I move to defer recommendation for article D to special town meeting.
Second.
Any additional discussion? As many who aren't in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, okay. We've deferred, so far all of our deferrals are four to zero. E, see if the town will vote to transfer two hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred dollars from the FY twenty-three capital plan as voted under article six of the May seventh, two thousand twenty-two annual town meeting to the Lunenburg School District for the purpose of installing duckless split climate control systems at the Lunenburg Primary School, or take any other action relative thereto. Alright, I move to recommend approval.
Second.
Any additional discussion? I will be voting against this. As many who aren't in favor, please say aye.
Wait, oh, can we have a discussion?
Yeah, sure.
Can you articulate why you're voting against?
Yeah, I think, you know, I think that the schools came forward, first of all, with a, with a pretty clear vision and I don't wanna, you know, we work hand in hand with the school committee. And there's a clear need to get, you know, air conditioning into the building, which I fully support. What I don't fully support is all the penetrations into the building exterior that's gonna come with these duckless split systems. You know, that there's a lot of, there's a big reason why homes, for the most part, have limited penetrations in the building envelope. Because every single penetration becomes a point of maintenance, that you have to then stop water from infiltrating. You know, this is not, no building of this commercial size, and I know it's a school, but I'll look at it through my professional lens and say it's a commercial building, even though technically it's not, it's municipal building, but no building of this size is, is using mini splits. Alright, I mean, you're using real mechanicals that have a far longer shelf life than, than ten, fifteen years. So I, I think the product that was proposed, I think the school committee did a great job explaining what this was in previous meetings. I think that their former facility director, I just could disagree with him wholeheartedly as a professional on why this is the way to go. I understand that the, what the schools have presented is that the alternative is a much more costly system. And so, you know, what they're saying is, hey, for two hundred and thirty-two thousand, we can get this done. And the alternative is to spend millions of dollars. I reject the millions of dollars analysis. You know, I think in, in this environment where, you know, we do a lot of this work, I just, I just, we just don't see that kind of dollar amount for this type of work. You know, it makes me question the scope that was put out to get to those millions of dollars. You know, so so I, I, I just personally, I'm just not in the, I don't think this is a good idea. I just don't think it's a good idea. I think it's a wrong system. You know, VRF is a much better system, it's newer. You know, I don't, what I heard in our presentation with the facility director for the schools was that they hadn't even considered that process, even though I very specifically had reached out to him previously and encouraged him to look into that, cause as an alternative, because it's similar to this mini split type system, but it's just less mechanicals, less penetrations, and, and works better. So I, I just think that it's a, it's a solution for today that's going to help get this building cool. It's going to put in, I think they were saying fifteen plus twenty different outdoor units all around this building. Which, you know, what's the impact of that going to be when you have a building that's designed to face the south? And now you're putting, you know, items that are undoubtedly gonna be hot. What's, you know, I think, this just brings too many questions to mind that I just didn't get the warm and fuzzy in the conversation with the school committee, facility director. I didn't get the warm and fuzzy that, that this was, this is the best way to go, but certainly it's gonna resolve the concerns and it's gonna resolve them for the next ten years. And maybe fifteen. And then we're gonna have, again, twenty plus penetrations. And each one of these usually has two penetrations to each one, so that's forty holes in the side of the building with, 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 with all those mechanicals that can go wrong. And it's just not how you design a building, it's like, it's like having in your house, getting rid of your boilers, getting rid of your, you know, getting rid of your boiler system and instead in every single bedroom, putting your own heating system and AC source. Why would you do that? Like, yes, it's gonna cool your house down, but who would have designed that? Nobody. So that's kind of where I'm at, but again, I know that we have a good relationship with the school committee, I hope that my opinions aren't taken away from that. But I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm a non-support.
I'd like to hear from the other members if, if they have opinions on this.
Well, I mean, even if there's a better plan, I don't wanna derail this one if it's the only plan right now, so, you know, I'm still, I would prefer voting in favor for this one, but.
Yeah, I would, I would vote, I mean, I have to, I have no experience in facilities or, you know, climate control in, in a large building, so I would have to defer to, you know, the, the school committee and, and the facilities director at that time. That said, the new facilities director is starting the twenty-third. And I would assume would review this. That will, it's too late for the warrant at that time. And I don't know if the new facilities director would have concerns over this or come up with a better plan, if that could come up as special town, I don't know how that could be handled.
I don't think, he's not gonna be able to do it in three weeks, but it's too much, too short of a time period to get this kind of quote and analysis.
I mean, if he looks and says, I mean, I don't know if it
Oh, yeah.
Be so like, no, this is absurd, immediate reaction or so, so I would be inclined to, to approve this and have the new facilities director, you know, some before anything would kick off, would review this. I'd rather have the money. It's already been allocated, right? It's already, I mean, it's already been allocated for them, is that right?
In the capital plan.
Yes.
The scope was different.
The scope changed, right, right.
And, and it doesn't resolve, you know, what I found to be the most, when I did a walk through the building, what I identified was that the room that shows the most heat stress is the library, which is that, which is with all the windows when you, you know, come up on the building. And those, that room based on this plan is not getting air conditioning. You know, which kind of makes me wonder, you know, the, the one building that has the, the one part that shows the most heat, maybe where we're at is a deferral. Maybe we're at a deferral, cause I think the schools may have the opportunity with their new facilities manager and I really want to defer to the school committee. So maybe, maybe the solution is a deferral, I withdraw my motion.
I would approve this and I would support this now.
You would support it now, see it too?
Yeah, because it's.
I mean, we just said that we need to not defer when we.
I know, I know, I don't wanna defer this.
You know, a warrant booklet that just says defer, defer.
Defer, it's terrible. Terrible.
I, I don't wanna do that. Your note says, an industry professional with facilities is, is taken, but.
Let me weigh in here as well, first of all, as a point of order, let me back up as a point of order. As we go through each of these articles, we're voting on whether or not to recommend approval, but in the first instance, we have to make sure that they're articles that we have actually recommended beyond the warrant too, are we doing that in each case?
So we've already accepted all of them onto the warrant.
Okay, so we have to make sure as we go down that, on each one, that it's actually been accepted for the warrant, so. Has this one been accepted for the warrant?
Yes.
Okay. I am, I appreciate your, your, I certainly appreciate your professional expertise, I, I, but I remember the presentation as well, it's a less than, I agree that it's a less than ideal solution. If they don't cool it, well, there's two things going on, if they don't cool it, we've got students operating in discomfort, that's one thing. The other thing is that not cooling it can do other damage to the building, as you yourself have noted and, 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 and explained to me quite, quite clearly. I think this is a less than ideal solution, but I am also inclined to support this.
Okay, then I will move to recommend approval of article D. I'm sorry, article E.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, no. That's a three to one. Alright, F, to see if the town votes raised appropriate. We need to, I move for the select board to defer article F. There's no dollar amount.
I can speak.
To special town meeting.
I can speak to this.
Do we have a second on this motion? No? Okay, to the town manager.
There is a dollar amount that, I did provide that to the board last meeting. It was three hundred thousand for that repair, it's an additional fifty thousand for metal roof on top of that. But speaking with the facilities director, we were proposing just the, without a metal roof.
So three hundred thousand?
Three hundred thousand, and that's a very reliable quote. Using prevailing wage rates and a contractor that's very familiar with big municipal jobs that would likely probably be bidding on this job as well. And the source that I'm working on right now is the excess funding from the thirty School Street project, because we received an earmark for a hundred thousand from the state. And a hundred thousand that could go towards this project. Really, it would be the capital plan from fiscal twenty-three with the hazardous materials abatement for thirty School Street, and there's about three hundred and seventy-one thousand in that line. And there should be more than enough funding for this article.
Okay.
I'm waiting, the one thing I'm waiting on is the earmark is coming from DEP and it's been a more arduous process to get reimbursement through DEP, cause they're, I don't think they're used to getting earmarks through their program, so the process has been slowed down. So it's been inconsistent, checking in with them when we're gonna receive those funds, I was told we're getting those on October twelfth.
Alright, with the dollar amount, I withdraw my motion and I moved for the select board to recommend approval of article F.
Second.
Any additional discussion? As many who aren't in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, unanimous. G, to see if the vote, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds one thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars and thirty cents into the sewer reserve capacity stabilization fund, or take any other action relative thereto. I move to recommend approval of article G.
Second.
Any additional discussion? As many who aren't in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, unanimous. H, see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds five thousand three hundred and forty dollars into the sewer inflow infiltration stabilization fund, or take any other action relative thereto. I move to recommend approval of article H.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Many who aren't in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, unanimous. I, see if the town will vote to transfer some money from the special purpose table, well, we know how much this is, nine hundred eighty-six thousand. For the, is there a lower amount that you're recommending?
I think that's more of a discussion for the board, like what are you, what, how much ARPA funding do you need?
What's the current balance of the special purpose stabilization fund?
Is two million one hundred and seventy-one thousand.
So it's almost half.
Okay. I think that, my opinion is I think eight hundred thousand is, is sufficient. But I know that it's, you know, it was nine hundred eighty-six thousand in total. It may be cleaner to ask for all nine hundred eighty-six thousand back. I wouldn't say back, but that's, you know, I think it may be cleaner to ask the town to commit funds that have already been reserved for these purposes, for these purposes. So that way ARPA funds could be used more broadly for the purposes ARPA can be used for. But do we want a lower dollar amount?
No, and it also could potentially become even more confusing than it already is. So I don't think we should do that.
Can you remind me again when the ARPA money has to be committed, spent?
Has to be committed by the end of twenty-four and spent by the end of twenty-six.
Correct.
What does, so committed, what does committed mean?
Committed means we have to.
Select board vote?
Yeah, we make a decision on what we're gonna do with it and twenty-six means that we've paid it out to whoever.
So whatever it's being used for.
So I'm really not concerned about us losing this money. I mean, we have so many requests as it is, you know, I think we'll easily commit all of this by the end of next year.
Yep. Lou, thoughts?
Yeah, that's my thinking.
Nine eighty-six? Renan, you with that?
The full amount? Yeah, I'm just writing notes.
Alright, so nine eighty-six. I move to recommend approval of article I, as written.
Second.
Any additional discussion? As many who aren't in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no, unanimous. J, this is pretty straightforward, see if the town will vote to hear an interim report from the municipal building design committee or take any other action relative thereto. I recommend approval of article J.
Second.
Any additional discussion?
Aye.
As many who aren't in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous approval. K, see if the town will vote, this is the lengthy article related to the Parks Commission's presentation today. I'll read, I'll read it. So I'm reading all the other ones, so people at home can be like, what? To see if the town will vote, one, to authorize raising and appropriating the sum, raising and appropriating of the sum of one hundred eighty-four thousand for final engineering and design services for certain recreation and open space areas at the property known as Marshall Park, located at one hundred. located at one hundred Chestnut Street, as shown on Assessor's Map zero six zero, lot zero one eight, as previously voted under Article Four of the November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two Special Town Meeting warrant with an additional sum of one million dollars, being heretofore committed by the select board from available American Rescue Plan Act funds for associated improvements to said Marshall Park, specifically including the construction of a playground, multi-sport courts and pavilion for a total amount of one million, one hundred eighty-four thousand dollars committed to the aforementioned project, representing one hundred percent of the total cost thereof. Two, to dedicate the aforementioned one hundred Chestnut, uh, Street property to active recreation purposes pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-five, Section Three, consistent with said property's present restriction to park and playground purposes forever, per the deed of the town dated March eighteenth, nineteen thirteen, and recorded with the Worcester Northern District Registry of Deeds at Book Two ninety-one, page four ninety-seven. And three, to authorize the Parks Commission and/or the select board on behalf of the town to apply for and accept any and all grants deemed necessary under the Urban Self-Help Act, three oh one CMR five point zero zero, uh, and others or ant sequential as reimbursement. Uh, is that correct? Ant sequential, Tom? Uh, Gary, that's what I thought.
You can say et sec if you wish.
Et sec, uh, as reimbursement for, uh, project costs and expenses and to enter into all agreements and exercise, and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary on behalf of the town to effectuate the same or take any other action relative thereto. I don't think anyone's going to know what that means. Well, I think some people will. I don't think that I would know what that meant if I got this in the mail without having watched the meeting.
Something that long.
Well, that's what the Parks Commission presentation will be for.
Yep.
So I'm just going to have to speak to it.
Recommend approval, uh, um.
Can I, from a border once again, Mr. Chair, did we already vote on this particular article to even have it appear on?
We did not.
All right, so let us do that.
I move to accept Article K into the warrant.
Second.
Uh, any additional discussion? As many as are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes. I'm going to correct myself. We did last week accept Article K. We did. Um, but we, no harm in doing it again.
Now we really do.
All right.
This article.
Yeah.
Redundant.
I move, uh, to recommend approval of Article K at Special Town Meeting.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right, as many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Unanimous. L, I'm not reading L.
Or the rest of them.
Or the rest of them. I move to recommend approval of Article L.
These are.
Article L, as a reminder, okay.
Yeah, so.
All right, second, any additional discussion? This is the AgCom one. All right, um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, those opposed, unanimous. M, uh, so M is related to common driveways. Um, and this is presented by the planning board. I move to recommend approval of Article M.
Second.
Any additional discussion? As many as are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, unanimous. And N, N is related to the solar park canopy. Do we get an update from the planning board on, um, no, we didn't. I move, I think we should defer till next week on this.
Second.
I move to defer till next week on N.
Second.
Or Special Town Meeting. Second again?
Yes.
All right. As many as are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're deferring on N, but we will come back to it next week. Everything we're deferring, we're coming back to if we have a meeting next week, which we should. Article O, and this is related to the large-scale ground-mounted photovoltaic installations, also known as large solar, um, panels on the ground. Uh, I move to recommend approval of Article O.
Second.
Any additional discussion? As many as are in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Uh, unanimous. P, and this is related to the Water Supply Protection District. I move to recommend approval of Article P.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right, as many as are in favor of, of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye, I think. It's so long.
It is.
I haven't even had the chance to read the whole thing.
Do you want us to defer on this one?
Yeah, can we defer this one? This is.
Yes.
Like pages.
All right, I'm going to withdraw the motion. Were you withdrawing your second?
Yes.
I move to defer Article P to Special Town Meeting.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right, as many as are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Uh, the motion passes. So next week to the town manager, which ones do we need to come back to? A through.
D.
D.
And N.
Okay.
And P.
A through D, N and P. All right. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to just make a motion just for housekeeping, just in case, so nothing can slip through the cracks. A motion in the nature, essentially, I'll just make the motion, to the extent that the select board has voted on a disposition of any article to either defer, uh, not recommend approval or recommend approval. Such vote on disposition also explicitly constitutes a vote to put it on the warrant.
Second. Any additional discussion? All right, as many as are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. All right, the motion passes. Okay. I'm so long, like, handicapped by not having that second page, even though it's in the dry. All right. Uh, select board bylaws. All right, so. All right, so what we have tonight, and we are going to only hit a couple of these, but let's go ahead and get started. So Section three point two is taken from the Charter. Um, so this is all, um, language that I'm sure most of us are familiar with, as we've all read it several times. So we're not looking to change Section three point two because we can't, but we're using that as a guide. So three point two kind of goes over based on the Charter, uh, for, for those at home who, who, um, don't necessarily follow the organization of our documents. The Charter acts almost like our Constitution. It is our highest document in the hierarchy. Um, nothing can conflict with it. And then below our Charter, we have our bylaws, and then below our bylaws, we have our regulations and policies. So, um, going to Chapter three oh five, this is the select board policies as it relates to remote participation. So we adopted this policy prior to, um, prior to the pandemic. And in the pandemic, several things changed. So we're, we're kind of in this right now status of limbo when it comes to, uh, not having a final rule or law as it relates to what's going to happen with, um, our media, open meetings. In other words, during the pandemic, we've been able to incorporate Zoom, we've been able to have remote meetings. We've been able to have members absent for any reason at all and participate remotely for any reason at all. Based on our policies, the reasons that a person can be, um, can attend remotely is, is limited. And so, uh, it's personal illness, it's personal disability, it's an emergency, it's military service or significant geographic distance. So being at home, feeling a little under the weather isn't, uh, it could be considered a personal illness that could qualify. I just don't feel like it, uh, is certainly not a reason. Or hey, all, why don't we just meet remotely? That, that's not a possibility based on our policy. So the wordsmithing is obviously not going to happen tonight. Um, but what I would like, the, um, what we do need to think about, uh, over the coming months, so that way we can make some modifications to Special Town Meeting is, um, what we want this policy to say going forward. And do we want to take over, adopt in some of the changes that came about during the, uh, the pandemic and incorporate them permanently into our policy? So I know that these policies are thick, so, uh, as homework perhaps, if we all can take a look at three oh five uh, and, uh, over the next week or two and get back with, if you want to come to the meeting on the twenty-fourth with any recommended language changes, uh, submit them to the town manager and I, uh, you know, before the meeting, and then we will distribute at, right before or at the meeting. So that's what three oh five is. Any questions about that? So again, we're targeting meeting on the twenty-fourth to discuss three oh five. All right, um, Section three oh seven. So I'm sorry, Chapter seventy-four, Chapter seventy-four. So my recommendation for Chapter seventy-four is to change the word selectmen to board of, uh, to select board. So in other words, uh, we as members of the select board have options on how we self, um, on what we want to be called. I don't want to say self-identify, but what we want to be called. So we can be a select man, we can be a select woman, we can be a select board member. Um, I prefer select men. I think that most members of the current board prefer select men. Um, but formally, since we've changed our name to select board, I would advocate that we change select men, were noted, and board of selectmen to just say select board. Are we all in agreement generally?
I need, I need, yeah, sure.
Yeah, that's, that's not a substantive change.
I thought we did that already, no?
We didn't do it for this.
Oh, not for this one?
Yeah, we did it in the Charter. So that, yeah, that's why we're going through the bylaws to clean them up. So we have the bylaw review committee, but the select board, um, was not able to address all of our bylaws, uh, and so we didn't make changes to all of them. But I would make that recommendation. Are we all in agreement?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move. I'll make the motion. I move to modify the language in Chapter seventy-four to read, uh, each instance of the word selectmen shall be replaced by the word, uh, each, excuse me, each instance of the word selectmen and each instance of the phrase board of selectmen, uh, shall be replaced with select board.
Second.
Second. Any additional discussion? As many as are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Okay, motion passed. I'll make another motion. I move for the select board to add those modifications to Chapter seventy-four to the annual town meeting in the spring.
Second.
Second. Any additional discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. All right, the motion passes. So what's going to happen is in the spring, when the warrant opens, we're going to have to do it again. Uh, but this just puts us on the, uh, calendar that we know this is one article that we will be hitting. Chapter five. Chapter five is administration of government. Um, really, the, the areas here are going to be five dash three, uh, five dash two, five dash four. Uh, I didn't say that in order, five two, five three, five four. So in five three, we have some conflict now with the current language that's in the Charter. So certain duties that, um, are identified as, the way that five point three reads now is all public grounds, parks, buildings and places of public resort owned by the town shall be under the supervision of the Board of Selectmen, except as otherwise provided by statute. And the use of the town hall may be granted by the selectmen at their discretion, without pay therefore, to any town organization or society for free public entertainment, lectures or meetings. All right, so the Charter says that this is now a town manager's responsibilities in part, uh, in large part, the town manager's responsibilities. Uh, so I think that we're going to need to clarify what this means. Keep in mind, these properties are under our care and custody, so we may want to consider what that actually means by a bylaw. Um, I do not recommend any changes to five point two, except for a selectman to board, to select board. Uh, I think it's necessary for the police department to continue to come before the select board whenever they want to implement rules and regulations. And as a unique, um, um, my suggestion, as a unique, uh, department, they have the power to arrest. Um, and I think that while that is, uh, generally supervised, managed by the Commonwealth in many regards and the town manager, I do believe it's healthy and necessary to have an additional layer of oversight, uh, when it comes to their regulations and, and rule changes. So I would not recommend a substantive change to five dash two, and it has been the habit of the, um, police department to come before the board with their significant policy changes. And then style inspection of public establishments, um, you know, this is still in place. I also don't recommend any changes to this. We can inspect anything, um, you know, basically, that's licensed by us, uh, or that's, uh, under our supervision. And then the annual audit requirement and disposal of property, the annual audit requirement. So what I would suggest for Chapter five is there's not substantive changes that I would recommend, but I do think we all want to take some time with this one too. I think this one will be a little more straightforward. Um, can we also task ourselves to look at Chapter five for the, uh, twenty-fourth? All right, and then I will also ask the town manager to take a look at five dash three and advise, uh, it doesn't have to be on the twenty-fourth, but if it can be, um, by December, first meeting in December, if you can make a note for yourself. I think I kind of know your calendar quite a bit at this point. If you can, um, make a note for yourself for revisions for five point three, um, by first meeting of December.
I would say town council should review these against the Charter first, didn't make any comments with any contradictions because the Charter supersedes any bylaws.
Correct.
Right, so I would ask, I'll do that first.
Yep. Okay. And, um, licensing authority is thick, so I think we need to save this till after we tackle Chapters, uh, twenty-four and five. I'm sorry, three oh five and five. Agreement, dots?
Yes, I could, could.
Okay. And Heather, I think that's a great idea. Okay. And I was, I, I just have to keep looking at it or else, I'm, you know, just so.
Spread in your journal.
I know, I know, but I'm used to like the handwriting. It's a whole process ever. All right. All right, um, that is the end of our agenda for the night. Um, yes, um, that's the end of our open meeting agenda for tonight. Any questions? Okay, so upcoming meetings. Heather, you know, I'm just going to pull it up in here. Upcoming meetings. So the town will be, uh, select board is planning to meet again next Tuesday, October seventeenth, and the Tuesday after the twenty-fourth. Uh, we will be taking, I guess, the, is thirty-first Halloween, uh, probably every year, right? Uh, so we'll be taking the thirty-first off. I never know if it's the thirtieth or the thirty-first. I don't celebrate it. Uh, October the eleventh, we have a ribbon cutting for the new ADA patio, as the town manager mentioned. This could be at twelve o'clock at the Lunarberg Adult Activity Center, also known as a former, um, also known as the Eagle House. And then, uh, that's going to be at twenty-five Memorial Drive. So again, October the eleventh, ribbon cutting, new ADA. Um, you know, this is going to be tomorrow at noon at twenty-five Memorial Drive. And then we have our November fourteenth Special Town Meeting at seven PM at the Lunarberg Middle School, High School Auditorium. Any public comments this evening from the town manager?
I do have one related to a public comment that was stated tonight regarding the investigation. And, um, one area that was false was the vote by the select board at the January meeting was designating, um, the chair and, uh, select board member Alonso at that time and the town manager to cooperate with the investigation. So the role of the town manager throughout this was not, um, an active investigator, um, per se. It was to cooperate and provide access to and coordinate with personnel. Um, so I want to clarify that. That was false. And anyone can go back to that meeting and look at the vote that was taken that night.
It was equally false to state, uh, that, that there was absolutely no blame associated to our previous principal assessor. Um, I think that what we've made very clear from, from pretty early in the process uh, was that Mass DOR told us very clearly that the documents that were presented to them were reviewed by them and accepted by them uh, and that they did not identify conflicts with the documents that were submitted. Now, we know that some information was modified in terms of, you know, how many sales were looked at. Was it, was it the correct total of sales? Were there some things that were not considered qualified that were presented as being qualified? And the substantive result of what transpired, um, which I think is, is very clear on the logic side is that, um, many homes, an index one, sold for double the assessed value that resulted in a doubling of their land values. And I think that that is the clear math of what happened. And what we have said several times as we've gone through the process is it didn't need to happen that way. Um, and I think that that was, you know, what we've tried to uncover and identify is that's. And I think that that was, you know, what we've tried to uncover and identify is that's what happened. It was very black and white. That's what happened. Was it correct? Was it the best way? Was it the only way? I think we've been very clear that the answer there is no. Of course it wasn't, you know, the only way that things could have been done. That, that within DOR standards, you know, there's, there's a lot of breadth between what you can do within the confines of their standards. And both the approach that the principal assessor took was acceptable within those standards, as well as the approach that, you know, MFS took, that was also acceptable within their standards. And I think the feedback from the board especially has been, if you have this variety of approach, then why not take a more reasonable approach that impacts people more reasonably? So, I mean, I, I know that many things have been said that, you know, people are entitled to opinions, people are entitled to perceptions, but that's the black and white of how we got here. And, and I think that what we've also identified throughout the process was that there were many things along the way that could have happened prior to January the 1st of this year that would have changed the outcome. And so part of what the investigation and the board has been doing individually is figuring out what those, what those things were. You know, we did do the dive, we did have those conversations, and I know that people didn't want to hear that, hey, the people in your neighborhood, their house is sold for a lot more. You know, and so I think that what's owed to the public is, you know, we can't find ourselves in a position where we have that kind of hard drops. That there's a lot of other stuff that needs to happen. So that way, we, you know, we need to, before we ever get to the point that someone's taxes are doubling on their land, that there's a very critical analysis and review to verify. You know, can we say in one breath that something fell within a standard and that, and the same breath say, but, but it was wrong? Absolutely, you can say that. Absolutely. Because what's right and wrong doesn't always reference on a standard. What's right and wrong is, can incorporate impact, incorporate so many other things than just does it, does it adhere to a standard? But I think we've been pretty clear in, in what we were able to identify, you know, we had a conversation with DOR, we were very public with it. But I get it, when you're at the other end of this and you're the person who got the $3,400 on average tax increase to hear someone say that it was technically correct, it's like, what do you mean? You know, how was that fair? But fairness and what's technically correct are, are not two things of the same, are not in the same category. And I think we all can agree that what occurred was grossly unfair. And so what we have to be better at is making sure that things can be technically correct and still be egregiously wrong. And so how do we make sure that we don't find ourselves in a position where someone can do something that gets through DOR's hands, be considered technically okay, and still not account for all those things that we as a community have the power and ability to input into the process, which we have not had a history of doing? So, you know, I understand that when it comes to money, when it comes to livelihood, that there's a lot of emotions involved. I think that when we look at the impact, it was approximately $1.5 million in taxes that got spread over 420 homes on average. And the impact of the work that this board did in being able to identify a path ahead, hiring the right people, figuring things out, the impact was 1.3-plus million came back to the residents. And that's a clear sign that this board did not believe that the approach that was taken initially was an appropriate course of action. You know, when it comes to an investigation, you know, we operate on advice of counsel. Everything, you know, when we have sticky questions, we do things on the advice of counsel. And so the way that we formed ourselves, you know, as, as a board in, in addressing the investigation and keeping the board engaged in it, identifying who the principals would be to help look into things, you know, we did that under the advice of counsel of how, of what we needed to do in, in the most efficient, effective way. For the chair of the Select Board to have to, have to, to have to post a meeting, to have a conversation with the town manager, I'll say it any day, that's ridiculous. I don't want any part of that. So if I have to post a public meeting to call Heather about anything, what, no. That's not, that's not the dynamic that exists between chairs of any board and staff that support elected boards. That's wholly unreasonable. You can't have a conversation that way. You can't act quickly that way. So, I mean, I don't really believe that the people at home who were in the crisis that they were in when they came before us on January 10th honestly expected that we were going to wait two to three days, you know, before we'd have a conversation with one another about how do we help people. I don't think anyone expected that. We sure as hell didn't expect it. And we didn't think that we were violating rules when we were doing it, because that's what we do regularly. We regularly communicate about many things all the time. And we don't call ourselves a subcommittee and we don't post minutes. You know, because that's just, that's just the dynamic of conversation, you know. But I, you know, but I, we all recognized this year that many people were hurting, and I think this board went above and beyond to try to address it. Nonetheless, you know, I'll offer as a final comment here that the, you know, the investigation report has taken a lot of time, and it is on me. My job is to compile this final report. It's very lengthy. And quite honestly, you know, you know, when I decided to become a selectman, I did not commit the town 40 hours a week of, of my time. That's not the commitment I made. I expected it to be a meeting, you know, on the Select Board for two to three hours a week. I expected it to be, you know, additional committee assignments for probably five more hours a week. And I, and I agreed and understood that the job could be about, at most, 15 hours a week, 20 hours a week when things were really busy, and probably five to 10 when they weren't. And from, you know, January 10th till April 24th, it was a 40-plus hour a week job on top of a full-time job. I mean, swing by my house, 1170 Mass Ave, I haven't fixed my roof yet, which was my spring project. I'm not saying this is about me. What I'm saying is, you know, I chose to run for this job, and when you get here, you have to rise to the occasion. But I can't give the town 30, 40 hours a week. I did it for four months of this year, and I cut down to about 30 for a couple more months, and then I cut down to about 20. But I have, I have a professional job, and I just can't keep doing that. So it's going to take a little bit longer. I think we did have a good meeting to give people the substantive update, but what we need to provide people is a full-fledged document. Now, what does the Charter require? Let's talk about requirements for a moment. What does the Charter require? The Charter says that the Select Board, it does not say that the community, it says that the Select Board may investigate anything. And it says that our duty is to provide a report in the annual town report. We're not obligated to provide updates on a regular basis. We're not obligated to have meetings to inform the public, but those are obviously the right things to do. And so you do them. You know, it's, it's the right thing to do to give someone a thorough report with all the supporting documents of how you got where you needed to get to. That's what we committed to. But what is actually required, a report, just a simple report of our key findings. But we've committed to doing more, so it's, you know, I will commit that, you know, it's something I am slowly trying to finalize. It's taking a lot of time, but I know that we owe this to the public and we want to give the public everything. Every single document that we have, everything that, that, that came through, everything we considered, it's just hundreds of pages. And so compiling it into a format that's digestible, and that's not just a slot mess of just a super-thick packet, it takes time. And having a full-time job, being in this role, it's taking more time than I think any of us expected, especially me. So I hear the complaints, and the public is always welcome to make them. And I, you know, but I honestly think that, you know, I can point to every member of my family, especially my spouse, who understands the amount of time that, that being a selectman takes, the duty that comes with it. You know, you can't please everyone all the time, but we have to just keep doing the right thing, one foot in front of the other, every single day. All right.
I had one more thing I wanted to add. Because if I wait, I might forget to mention it next meeting. That other inaccuracy or insinuation that the amount of abatements lined up exactly what I had estimated that is completely incorrect. So I had stated early how I came up with the calculation was to look at the opinion of value of all the filed abatement applications. And also a secondary method was to back out the lakefront increases. I have no, you know, say over what was approved for our abatement applications and what they came up with or the consultant's condition factor that was added to the value of the property. So I just want to make that clear, that, that insinuation is very off-base.
Yeah, well, you know, people are, I think the part of the beauty of government is that we have to hear the stuff we don't agree with. We have to hear the, the opinions, the perceptions of people. I mean, I've heard many times this year, I hate the lake community. It's like, I started my campaign in the lakes. When I hang out with my friends, most of the time, it's more like Hickory Hills. You know, I mean, it's like the most absurd thing. But, you know, people, people sometimes get those perceptions, and we have to, I think, as, as professionals and as elected officials, understand why those perceptions develop. You know, sometimes negative perceptions are very unhealthy for a democracy, and so if we can attack some of those perceptions and change them, then I think we have to try to. But also, you know, we can't change everyone's opinion. You know, every time we make a vote, someone disagrees with us. And the longer we sit in this role, the, the more stale we get. You know, so, I mean, you know, we just have to keep the focus on the values that we come to the table with, what values we try to promote, and doing the right thing. Because, you know, nobody volunteers at this kind of time for, you know, for themselves. You know, we do it for duty and we do it for community, and I really do believe that. And I think that I've been fortunate as a member of this board to work with other members who I honestly can believe were here because of a genuine care for their fellow man. And that's been a fortunate part of this town, and, you know, you speak to our state delegation, they all say Lunenburg is the best town. I'm sure they tell that to everyone. But they say that, you know, the way that we operate as a community is very professional. It's a very, really well-functioning board. And that speaks to the patterns that have been created over many years, well before I ever showed up on the scene in this seat. And, and I think that, you know, we've done a good job over time. And when things happen that are terrible, that impact a lot of people, I think the Select Board did a great job of responding to the concerns. Naturally, it's hard. It's hard when you're getting, you know, 20 emails or phone calls a day. You can't answer them all. You just can't. But I think that the relief that we were able to provide our residents, I think we rose to the occasion. It was all hands on deck. And I think that most people who received their abatements are satisfied that we heard them, that we listened to them, that, and, and we addressed their concerns, which is what they expect their executives to do. And I think this executive did that. And that's not me as an individual, that's me as, you know, that's the board, this executive body, you know, rose to the occasion. So, and that's to the credit of every member of the board, current and previous. And of course, to the staff. All right, I think that's enough soapbox for one night. Any other public comments this evening? Any from the public? All right, I move to enter into executive session and to adjourn the meeting. And to adjourn, I gotta make sure I get this wording right. Thank you. All right, I move to enter into executive session and to adjourn the meeting from executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. And subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and I as chair so declare, which I do, and this is with regard to the clerical union. This is going to be a roll call vote to enter into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Selectman Imke.
Aye.
Selectman Nizzolo.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And an aye for myself, Michael Ray Jeffries. The time is now 2:09:24. For those at home, we will not be coming back to regular session. We want to thank you for being with us tonight. And as always, please continue to reach out to, you know, your board members. Please consider the vacancies that we have and consider stepping up. And as you know, we have many jobs available, approximately 316 hours a week available. So please take a look at those jobs and please submit applications, so that way we can continue to work better together.